All right, seven o'clock. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brett Davidson. I'm the principal at the middle school. Therese Gerlitz, our assistant principal here is joining me to talk a little bit later in the program about our Lippi program, limited in-person instruction. It's our first parent forum in a while, but we will be doing these frequently as we move toward coming back in person. First, I want to thank you for your patience and grace in all of this. It's been a very difficult for a difficult year for everyone across the board, and so we appreciate the patience that you've given us. Like I've said, back in August and September, it seems like a lifetime ago, but I just want to be really transparent and open with everything that we're doing and give you as much as I can at a given moment. And so with that being said, everything that we talk about is in some form a draft. A lot of it is close to being final. Some of it is in the middle. But just like with everything else that's happened, we get some new regulations or guidelines that come out and we have to tweak and make some changes. So this is what I've got at this point, and it's a draft, but I want to give you what I have. So and the goal each week is just to give you more and more detailed information as we go along. And so as we get closer, you'll just have a better picture and idea of what's going to happen. And we also want it to be a goal to make it as smooth as possible in terms of the process. And we'll shoot for that. But we can't guarantee it because this is all brand new for everybody involved. So, but we will try. Just a few things for tonight. We're going to go through just a timeline. I'm going to give you some important dates that are coming up. We'll review Fox Online versus Fox Hybrid, kind of how it all started. And then part of the reason why you've been getting some questions lately from AG teachers and the district office about our plans and what we're going to do is that there's been some changes that have made things a little more confusing and a little more difficult. And so we've had to come come and ask you some more questions. And so I'll explain the reasoning behind that. Take a look at the Fox Hybrid in-person process. So a little bit about what it's going to look like when kids come back and our plans for schedules at least. And then Therese is going to talk about limited in-person instruction that's been happening this year and then how that's going to change and shift in the coming weeks. And then we'll go through some other important dates and some questions that I've received about things so far. And speaking of that, if you do have a question, just use, please use the Q and A feature. And if I don't get to all of them, I'll gather to them together afterwards and either put them in the presentation next time where we'll put together a Q and A thing that we send out to everybody. So the timeline is so not really related to coming back in person, but just wanted to remind people who are watching that February 12th, so coming up real quick is the end of the second quarter. Then we transition to the start of the third quarter next week. I'll explain this, or Therese will explain this later, but from March 8th to 19th, the Lippi programs with some exceptions will be paused as we get everybody back in the building staff-wise to work out all the logistics for getting kids back for in-person hybrid. Our, what we're calling our orientation week is March 15th through 19th. I don't have a lot of firm details on that yet, except to tell you that that is going to be the first week that it will be possible to have kids come in the building in some form to get oriented towards the new schedule. And so we're still working through how best to do that. What's the right balance and mix between just continuing doing our regular schedule right now, but then wanting to get kids in the building to at least kind of coach them through what it's going to be like. And then we take spring break and then we come back the week of March 29th in Fox Hybrid in person. So that's the general timeline. I'll give a more specific timeline at the end dealing with other dates, but I wanted to give you those upfront. So this, this goes back a little bit, back to kind of the original planning that happened over the summer and how we ended up building the programs that we did. But we wanted to make sure to offer two main programs that would hopefully meet the needs of everyone and give some choice also. And we ended up with Fox Online and Fox Hybrid. So Fox Online, for those of you who are in it, you know it, but for those who don't, I'll just review it real quick. It's its own separate program independent of a particular school. And then one in which families kind of set their own schedule. It works through the edgenuity curriculum. It's a mix of K eight kids from around the district and also SMS kids. And everyone still has their spot at their resident school. And that program will continue as is for the rest of the year. And so that was one option people could choose right away if they just wanted some consistency for the entire year and just wanted to have an online program. We also built Fox Hybrid, which was attached to someone's neighborhood school. And so for us, it was Silverton Middle School with Silverton Middle School teachers and support staff. It was built in a way that would work in person and virtual. And it follows as closely as we could make it are kind of our normal class offerings that we had, both core classes and electives. And then it's, it was a mix of edgenuity and SMS stuff depending on the subject and depending on our ability to build it in that program. So those are the two main ones. The confusing part has come in recently with new guidance that said that if we're coming back in person and if our county has not met the metrics, we had to continue to offer what's called comprehensive distance learning, which is some live teaching and interaction as a class. And so what that has led to is so Fox Online stays the same. But we got this guidance. And so then we had to start building a third program essentially. And so as we move into in-person instruction, I just want to try to clarify some of these terms. So as we move into in-person instruction in a county that hasn't met the metrics, we've had to make some changes and build this third program. So the plan remains the same as we built it in the summer. For those who signed up for Fox Hybrid and who are okay with their students coming into the building right now, the plan stays the same. We built the Fox Cyber program for virtual and then they'll come in person, kind of like how we laid out the beginning of the year. Where it's different, and this is important for those of you who are either still struggling with the decision or have made that decision, is that for those who signed up for Fox Hybrid, but don't want your student to come back in person at this point. So the guidance says that we need to offer comprehensive distance learning. The only way that we can really pull that off as a district, which is why we've been asking everybody what they want to do is we have to pull staff from the district to staff that third program in order to give the live teaching that that CDO requires. So everybody that started on Fox Hybrid either goes Fox Hybrid in person or C D L if, and it's the C D L if you're not comfortable with your student coming back in the building at this point with the metrics, the way they are. So nothing has been decided yet with the staffing. The district office is in process with that right now, figuring out the best way to pool those teacher resources together and then make a plan for teaching the kids that have chosen C D L. The, there's a very high likelihood that the student's teacher would change because it has to be kind of a district program and that I can't have teachers in the classroom trying to do both at the same time also. And so that's just something I wanted to reiterate and make sure, make sure people understood. If you're still struggling with that, ultimately, I, give me a call, email me and we can talk it through just more specifically to your circumstance, just because I want you to be able to make a good decision for your own family. So please reach out for sure. But that's what's been going on. So now there'll be three programs, Fox Online, Fox Hybrid in person, which is the main thing we'll talk about tonight. And then C D L and C D L. I just don't have enough information to be able to dive into that too much. I pulled a couple of slides, went back into kind of August and September to talk about what we built and then how it will flow into Fox Hybrid in person. And so a lot of stuff went into building the master schedule. I worked a lot with the high school over the summer because we're the, the two schools that are kind of content specific in our teaching periods. And so we just had a little bit different of a, of a structure to build. And so we decided to go on the quarter system. We decided to go quarters that were split apart and the high school decided to go quarters that were back to back. And so when, you know, my daughter's in, in the high school and she's taking a math class. And so she took the first semester of her math class in first quarter and second semester of her math class in second quarter. So we take a semester's worth of content. We try to fit it as best we can into nine weeks. And then we do two nine-week sessions that hopefully equal a semester of content each. And so we decided to split that apart. And the main reason was is I didn't really want kids who stopped. You know, we, we went virtual in March. I didn't want kids to wait an entire year to then have math instruction. And so we decided to split the quarters in half. And so like if a student started out in math, wellness and social studies, first quarter, they're going to have those same classes, third quarter. And if they started out second quarter with E L A, Falcon Success and Science, in second quarter, they're going to have those fourth quarter. So they're just rotating through. There's a lot of reasons it went into that, but basically we wanted to make sure they still got their core classes. We wanted to make sure we could offer some electives, but that they wouldn't be taking all the subjects all at once, especially in a virtual setting. This was one of the first drafts of our schedule that we came up with that I talked about. And, and this is also back from August and September. And so a lot of considerations went into this one for sure. And we went back and forth and just talked a lot about it as a staff. And so we agreed on a few things from the beginning that kind of, kind of set the trajectory for what we decided to do. And, and one of those is that we felt like it was really important that kids had some form of elective, at least chance of an elective that they might like. And we did our best to do our normal electives, but some of them we couldn't do just because of logistical stuff, but we tried to offer enough where people could have something fun to do and different to do outside of their regular core classes. So one of the, because of that, we kept our electives when we went in person as virtual because of cohorting is essentially the biggest reason. And so the cohorting requirements that are in place by the state for us and the high school proposed basically it made it a big issue. We have to be really good with our cohorts. And if we did electives in person in the afternoon, we would do a great job all day with our cohorts. And then we take a bunch of kids from different cohorts and mix them together and kind of basically ruin our plan. And so because of the cohorts and because of our desire to keep kids with a chance to get an elective, we decided to go virtual with that fourth period, no matter if we were in person or not. There were some other staffing and supervision and logistical issues that went into that. A lot of discussion went into it, but those are kind of the main things. And so this is our schedule right now. And I wanted to show you this schedule before I go to what the new schedule looks like. And as I mentioned earlier, one of our primary drivers in what we attempted to build this year was consistency. I wanted to try to build something as a school that wouldn't change dramatically. And we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel if we came back in person. And then we had to go back virtual and we came back in person. I didn't. It, so much has changed, so much that we wanted to try to make something that didn't disrupt things too much if we had to go back and forth. And so as you can see, the basic structure of it doesn't change too much. And so the things that kind of are foundational and stay the same is, you know, live classes are on the same day as right now. So every, their schedule that they are going to switch over to in third quarter. If they're virtual, their days for live classes are going to stay the same. Their independent and applied learning days are going to stay the same. Their Monday is the same. Their teachers are the same. And so all that stuff stays consistent. Now, obviously the, the big thing is what's going to change is they're going to come in the building for live class. And so that's going to be a big, a big change, but they're going to come on the same days to their same teachers. Right now, and again, this is where it really gets into draft form because there's a lot of things up in the air about transportation and other schools are all working out their schedules at the same time. But right now we would run roughly 7:55 is when we normally start to about 12:30. Now that's going to be very bus dependent, but I'm, I'm kind of shooting for that as our, hopefully our pretty close goal. They would take their three core classes when they're here. They'd be roughly about 85, 88 minutes somewhere in there. There would be about an hour gap from dismissal to when they would start their virtual fourth period. And again, that is very bus dependent as well because I need to, the bus barn needs to run routes. And then they need to tell me if that's a long enough time. Because I don't want kids rushing home and not having enough time to have lunch and have a break before they start class. But I also don't want to have too much time where people go home and then they forget about school and forget they have a fourth period. So some kind of balance in, in between that. A G would remain on Monday, but then right now we have A G starting. So on this last one right here, you see A G starts every morning and we do that on purpose to try to get kids up, get them connected and get them started with their day. But we really want to focus and take advantage and kind of take advantage of every minute that we have with them when they're in school with their, with their core teachers. So we're not going to do that A G in the morning. We're going to have that Monday meeting. And then A G teachers kind of at their discretion and kind of at the decision of maybe the A G group. Sometimes maybe they'll meet in the afternoons later in the week, maybe like on a Wednesday or Thursday, or maybe something fun on Friday. For one-on-one or small group things or even an A G, a whole A G group meeting. So that's going to be just kind of dependent on the A G. But we'll keep that Monday meeting because I think it's important for communication and keeping that, some lessons in there and some vital information that we're going to pass along. So again, this is, as this gets refined and decided for sure, I will just keep presenting the most updated version of this as I, as I have to you. But this is what we've kind of talked through so far, and I think it's going to be pretty close to what we end up with. And then I wanted to give you this visual before we kind of go on to other topics and, and Therese is going to talk here in a little bit about Lippi and then I'll, I'll answer some questions I've already received. So this is, and you know, and as we move along, I'll give more and more detailed information about how the day will actually look. One of my goals is we're going to try, try our best to make some videos of that we can push out to you guys and push out to kids, especially before orientation week of what it looks like. Just, so you're getting off the bus and this is where you go and this is what you do because there's a lot of little things that we have to have implemented to come back in a, in a safe way. And so, so this is one part of it. We've separated the school into three main sections based on grade level. And you can see that on the building right there, sixth grade out in the mods, seventh grade on the James Street wing, and then eighth grade over on the Slater Street sign. And each grade has its own pickup and drop-off area. And I'll be getting those plans to you as we get closer. Each grade has its own entry and exit point that they need to come in when they get dropped off or when they ride the bus. Everybody will be screened on entry. So not temperature screening, but just a visual check. I mean, that's that starts at home first and then on the bus that they ride the bus and then at the door, a visual check and some questions before they enter. And then teachers will travel to even kind of smaller areas of groups of three classrooms. And so each cohort will even be split farther down into teacher groups of three. And then each cohort will be assigned a particular bathroom and each cohort will have their own gym space for P E. And so just, I, I want you to know that our staff, I've got a really big committee that have broken down into smaller ones also just ironing out the details of all this. And as we kind of walk around and work through it, we'll, we'll try to come up with good ways to communicate that to you. That's not, you know, 40 pages of information, but just usable procedures that you can take a look at. So that's just a little bit of kind of what the structure of the school would look like and where they would go. And like I said before, we'll, we'll get more and more details to you as they come out. And so I do want to take some time. So Therese Gerlitz is my assistant principal and she's been running our Lippi program. She'll kind of explain to you what that is. And then some changes that are coming up to it. And then we'll get to some other questions here in a second. So Therese.
Thank you. So Lippi was a program that the Department of Education provided some guidance for shortly after schools kind of got up and going and most of them were in virtual and it provided us a method for providing, for giving some support to students who met, met the at-risk criteria that the Department of Oregon had, our Oregon Department of Education had, had given to us. And, and it was in very regulated, similar to how it will be when, when we're on campus now. But there are two-hour blocks where students would be on campus and they were co-horted in that they always met with that stable same group of students. And initially, when the program started, the cohort maximum size was 10. And within that, everybody was masked and social distanced. And we still followed restroom rules and procedures that you will still see all those safety measures in place in the upcoming plan as well. And, and it was fantastic for the students that we were able to serve on campus. The purpose was to support the instruction that was already happening during those live instruction days. So again, to kind of review that, if you were cohort A, you were in those live Google meets with your teachers on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So the students that were really in need of some extra support would then come for a two-hour session on Wednesday and Friday. And then if you're cohort B, it would be the opposite. You would have come on like a Tuesday or Thursday. And we've been very fortunate to be able to offer that at the middle school and have some amazing staff who've been working hard and making connections with the students in those programs. And just a quick point, some people get, there's some confusion because we have hybrid where students are coming on campus and there's that kind of schedule. And then there's Lippi, which is a really fun acronym. So thank you to O D E for giving us that. But for, for, for Lippi, the big difference is that Lippi is a very short session meant to help or support that live instruction that happened. It cannot replace those live lessons that were happening with the students. Whereas the hybrid schedule that Mr. Davidson described that students would be seeing later this year, they would actually be coming to school and getting those real lessons and that would, that actual live instruction. And the teachers will obviously still be giving them support and stuff as well, but the primary purpose of those hybrid days is to provide live instruction. The Lippi program will be paused about two weeks prior to when students return to hybrid on campus. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, it allows the teachers to come into the building and there's some big movements like Mr. Davidson said, we have the sixth grade wing, the seventh grade wing and the eighth grade wing. And that's going to be a lot of furniture moving and belongings and school supplies. And we can't have groups of students in the building while we're trying to move the actual furniture that they're using. It also allows the bus barn to train drivers and refine those transportation plans so that when we do offer hybrid to students, those bus routes are moving much more smoothly. And with the buses being used to transport students to and from those Lippi programs, being able to practice those other routes becomes a bit of a barrier there. And so we will, we will look forward to that hybrid part of being able to offer those in-person connections for students for that. But just as a reminder that those Lippi programs will stop about two weeks prior to when students report on campus. And that is our Lippi information.
All right. Thank you. So hopefully that helps. I know there are so many, I mean, education loves to have a bunch of stuff that we label and nobody understands. And so I apologize for all that with C D L and Lippi and, and everything. And so hopefully some of this has helped explain that. Okay. So important dates, and I added a few things, the parent forums on there. But again, the end of the second quarter, beginning of the third quarter. Basically the parent forums, unless something else comes up with some of the other committees I'm on that meet at night. We'll do every Tuesday night from seven to eight, right after Robert Frost goes at six o'clock. And we'll just do that probably, I have down here March 9th. That's the week before we would do our orientation week. And so that might be the last week. If there's, needs to be another one, then I'll just add it in there. But hopefully with each time, I'll get a little more specific. And then as we get closer to, I'll do the same thing I did before where I'll start to get, it's, I'll start to get teachers in here so that you can hear on their, on their level that they're working in, hear some specifics from them, just because I think that's really useful. You only want to listen to me talk about this stuff for so long. Like Therese said, the pause on the Lippi programs, the orientation week is going to be really important. And then first week of Fox Hybrid in person, the goal being March 29th, when we come back from spring break. So I'm going to go through some questions I've received and then, and then we'll probably wrap it up for tonight. Any questions you have, please put them in the Q and A and we can either answer them really quickly. And if not, I'll, I'm going to do, I'll incorporate them in the next meeting or do a write-up document that I send out with some communication coming up. So one question I have received a few times right away was, will students be required to wear masks all day and social distance? And the, and the short answer of that is yes. And no matter where people land on this issue out in public, we, we have to abide by the regulations that are given to us. And if we want kids to come back, then I have, we have to follow those guidelines. And so, yeah, the short answer is, is yes. And so if you have any clarifying questions about that, you can, you can contact me. A lot of questions about cohorts and that, and part of it is probably my issue with, we refer to cohorts in a lot of different ways. Technically speaking, the cohort is, you know, a, a group of kid, a small group of kids that interact with each other that if somebody was exposed to somebody with the virus or got the virus, would probably have to shut down. And so I, we have divided the school many, many, many ways to get the cohorts as small as possible with the effort, with the goal of if somebody gets the virus or is exposed to it, it would have as little impact on the rest of the school as possible. So if we just brought sixth, seventh, eighth graders all back, you know, by alphabet, we would essentially just have two giant cohorts. And if they were all interacting with each other, we could, we would have to shut down half the school at one time. And so we broken it apart, obviously by alphabet. And then you saw on my map, we spread them out by grade. And then within each one of those, we've broken them down in half, groups of three teachers and three teachers. And then even within those, you could consider that. You could consider that group of, you know, twelve to fifteen kids. It's a cohort. And so again, the goal is that if something happens. It doesn't have a ripple effect across the rest of the school. And that we can quickly identify, you know, people and let them their families know that they've been exposed. And and just be on it right away. And it also does help with classroom stuff too, at this point where we lower the, you know, the teacher to student ratio. And it helps with. You know, more attention to each kid. Question about like, so someone was concerned that if we're coming back in person, we wouldn't have electives because we built the schedule the way it is. All electives will maintain no matter what. They still are virtual. But or they will be virtual, but they'll still maintain. So whatever schedule somebody has starting third quarter, that schedule will stay the same. Somebody asked about technology and about Chromebooks. So even though when they come in the building, they're not just going to be sitting on Chromebooks doing online stuff. They'll be doing stuff with their teacher and. And so that should be a real positive thing. There will be some times where they will need the Chromebooks. And so. We're going to have stations set up in every single room. For charging if they forget to charge them. But yeah, that'll that's going to be part of a supply list that we'll put together that will communicate with you. Of things that every kid needs in their bag when they come back and forth from school. And the Chromebook will be one of those things. So someone asked specifically about an orientation day for sixth graders. Like I said before, I I don't have a ton of specifics on the orientation week yet. We're working on that and we'll get that to you in the next couple of weeks. But I do, yes, I especially I feel for our sixth graders, just like I feel for our freshmen. Well, and seniors, I mean, everybody, anybody who's transitioned to a new school. Has never met their teachers in person. And never been in the building. It's it's tough. It's really tough. And so. Yeah, we definitely want to take some time with our sixth graders. To get them oriented and that'll be part of that week for sure. One, one question is, why are we starting the week before spring break with orientation? Yeah, I I'll just be too honest with you and say that when I initially saw that, I really struggled with that idea. And that, but that's, I think I was still thinking in terms of normal school. You never do a dramatically different thing. You know, the week before spring break and then they leave and then they come back and forget. The only reason I I kind of I warmed to the idea is that. If we went on spring break and then came back and started something new. It would. I would rather kind of do a little bit of a trial run in terms of getting kids in the building, working out the logistics. Making sure they have a sense of it. And so then so that I can spend some time over spring break. Tweaking some things and changing some things and making it better for when we start. So. It is a little odd, but but ultimately I think it gives us a little bit of time to play around with things and and make it even better. But that is, yeah, that is a good question. And that so. Somebody asked specifically about protocol when if a teacher or a student. Gets the coronavirus or wasn't exposed. And so I just, I need you to know that we have, so we have a nursing team. That works very closely with the district office and with our with our county health department. And we get, we get very detailed reports very quickly of anything that happens with people that come on. On campus and have been exposed or or sick. And so our our process is pretty dialed in already with that. And. It and I can't answer specifically what would happen in every circumstance because it's always a little bit different. And so that's where the cohorting comes in and kind of contains the the spread. Is that we can know who has it, what cohort they're in. We have all the kids that they've been near. And we can even, you know, we can even see if they've been, if they violated social distancing and make. You know, just go diving into all that and making quick decisions about who we need to tell. Right away. And so. I I have a lot of confidence in that process and because we've had. You know, we've had this year and we've had limited in-person instruction. And so we've had times to make that process really good. But again, we'll be communicating that those specifics out as we go along as well. And so somebody did ask about the, you know, what's the district's definition of exposed? I'm not gonna, I'm, I don't want to get too detailed on that because I'm not, I'm not the health expert. But one thing that's clear in the guidance is that. Yeah. It it's it's a lot about distancing and time. So it talks about. If you are within six feet. Of somebody else for fifteen cumulative minutes in a day. Then that's something to consider as a as a possible exposure. The rest of the details, I I rely on the guidance and the nursing team and we give them information and they ask questions and we work it out together. And figure out if it's a true exposure or not. And then what the communication needs to be to the people who are possible or possibly exposed. So. Great question and. And we'll keep communicating that stuff over and over. So so with that, I I really appreciate it. You coming. And for those of you watching later, appreciate you watching it later. I just want to say thank you for your support of your own kids. First of all, as a dad of four at home. I know that a huge burden has been placed on you this year. And. Again, that's why we appreciate your support and patience. And anytime you want to talk through any of this stuff, just shoot me an email. I much prefer, you know, talking on the phone or talking face to face about. About anything. So just please let me know. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you. Appreciate your support. So thank you and have a good evening.